Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, that Pledge of Allegiance gave me goosebumps. That sounded so good. It's nice to have so many people in our hearing room for a change. Welcome to the September 12th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. We're going to conduct our meeting a little bit differently today since we have so many people here about the sewer issue. Madam Clerk, we're going to do the tax abatement first and then we're going to go straight into the issue that you guys are all here for today, so you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but you are welcome to if you want, so choose.
Here and you the dog first.
Oh, the dog first, yes. Number one, the dog first. Mr. Williams?
Great little dog, grew up between year old. It's a big, little, straight dog. Loves to play here, loves to have fun, played with her earlier today. And she's going to be up for adoption Saturday at 3:00. If we have room for additional family number, ready to take on the world here. Come out, meet our dogs at, you know, 3:00 this dog will be up for adoption. But if this one doesn't fit your requirements, we have $2800 to go. Hey, Jack, come back and take this.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. We need your help out there, so if you're ever looking for a dog, let that be the first place you go when you're looking for one, so. Thank you.
We're going to amend Resolution 12527 adopted August 15, 2012, approving an interim tax payment enterprise zone with L&amp;W Engineering, Inc., and Avon Plant, LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of L&amp;W. The amendment is to reflect the company's name is L&amp;W Cleveland.
Do we have to have anybody come up from the Engineers' Office?
Well, John Gager's here from City of Avon Lake, but no.
No? Okay, so moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Thank you. That was the easy one.
Yep.
Okay. We are now going to, like I said, go into the issue regarding the sewer. Hopefully, everybody got a copy of the letter from Mayor Rittenhour that he sent over to us either late last night or early this morning. I just received it this morning. We have been in discussions with him and different council members to try to get this issue resolved. We were hoping to have it resolved before today, but since they, you know, the mayor can't make the decision without approval of city council, we're still, you know, going back and forth trying to figure out a reasonable increase, because we all feel that that was very, way too much of an increase for all the residents in the township, so. Mr. Kallo, or?
Yeah, I would like to actually make a comment regarding Mayor Rittenhour's remarks since he kind of singled me out on here saying that I was grandstanding. Fact is, what the City of Lorraine did to the residents in Sheffield and Amherst Township is wrong. When I called into the City of Lorraine and I asked for a return call, I didn't get one. And the one thing I learned with some of these elected officials is you have to put pressure on them. If they think that they can ignore you and they'll go away, they'll do so. I've had calls in there, no return calls. When I asked for a meeting to discuss this, I was the first commissioner to call. They set up a meeting for me on September, or last week of September. So, just, I want you to know the whole story. It's about what is right, and that's why I was fighting. And yes, I'm not the most politically correct individual, but what I try to do is I try to get results. So as far as grandstanding, Mr. Mayor, it's about time that you at least come to the meeting and do what's right, so.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Williams, but I don't know if you were the first person to call, because I started with Chad Parsons, the Sheffield Township trustee, probably the first week of July when the bills came out. About when we first talked, Chad? So, and I was told the reason they couldn't get with you is you were asking for an evening meeting and they didn't have any available, because I did ask about that. There was an evening request?
Evening request, so we could have the residents that wanted to attend the meeting. You know, that's something that I get very frustrated with them on, is they could have came back and countered with a different time, but they want to have meetings when it's hard for the general public to get there.
Well, I thought it was a meeting with you. I believe it was a meeting with you, though.
No, this was going to be with the Amherst Township trustees, which we know, the trustees, most of them do have jobs. It's a part-time position, so they meet in the evening. Then you had other members that were going to be involved, the county engineer. We were going to have Rob Burner from Lorco there as well to talk about this.
Well, I don't know necessarily if they were going to meet with all those people, though. They probably would have met with you at a time to discuss it. I don't know. That's why when you need that special meeting was probably what the pushout was.
Well, Mr. Fowler's the one that stated, I believe, in Amherst Township, "We will meet with anyone, anytime."
Okay, I wasn't at that meeting.
Well, I'm just letting you know, and as far as the...
Because I asked him why, and he said, "Because you guys needed an evening meeting and to coordinate it." That was the first date available that worked for everybody, apparently?
Well, actually, there was a September 10th date that they threw out, and then all of a sudden it got changed.
Okay, all right. I don't know that. I'm just trying to, because I did ask, so. But I've been working on this since the 1st of July when we found out about this, because everybody's, not all of you are aware, my business actually sits in a township also. I'm in Sheffield Township. But the discussion points, and again, having been here for seven-plus years and governance, I didn't think quite that standing up and doing, well, the mayor called it a grandstand, but being allowed was the most effective way, because you can't sit down and negotiate with people when you're actually punching them in the mouth or getting upset with them. We still have to benefit the residents, and to cause city council or the mayor's office not to want to negotiate wouldn't have done anybody sitting in this room any good. So through prolonged discussions, and again, speaking, Chad and I, we're very close, because my business is in the township, and issues that were out there, I started dialogue with some city council people, Eddie Edwards in particular, the 5th Ward Councilman, who's probably got one of the longest tenure on city council in Lorraine, who's familiar, and knows a historical perspective on the area expanding, because he was at one point, you know, his house abuts, the old township part before it became city, and that abuts his district, abuts the township on the south. But in discussions on how this came about, they were looking at ways to handle some of the issues across the board, and probably sprung too fast in regards to the 200% increase. We have been in discussions, Commissioner Kosky and I spent two, two and a half hours there yesterday with the mayor, CT consultants, council people, trying to come up with a better deal for all the residents. We put proposals down, anywhere from going back to the rate it was, slight operation and maintenance costs. There was a whole gamut discussion on the summer sewage usage when you're watering your yard. The mayor, again, has talking points, and he's working with his consultants to finish up, do a presentation in Lorraine City Council. Brett Schuster, who is chairman of the Utilities Committee, actually, once they get this put together, is going to ask for a committee of the whole, and he hopes he can get something passed Monday that will be fair and equitable to everybody. There have been no increases since the early 90s, and the reason there's problems out there for Hidden Valley, because bulk of you are the Hidden Valley residents. Back in the early 70s, when they did sewer agreements, it was a developer with the City of Lorraine, or whatever city they chose to go to. Things were a lot looser then. You didn't have near the EPA mandates or requirements. You didn't have near the building codes or construction practices that were required that we now have to work under. So, Lorraine has some valid issues as to where some of the runoff needs to go and how they have to handle that and clean up of sewers, and we discussed that, again, for a couple hours, and I have a little bit better historical perspective as what's happened over here, being a contractor, you know, on how deals were put together and what got away. Hidden Valley sewer reminded me of the West 30th Street problem off Oberlin Avenue, Lorraine between Oberlin and Broadway, when they put underside sewers in. It's always been an issue. But the mayor is very agreeable to coming up with a better deal for everybody. Again, we've put our proposal, working with them, what we'd like to see, and he will be finishing up in the next couple of days when they get all their data. Again, we met with their consultant, CT, and he hopes to have a presentation Monday night for council that he will brief us on ahead of time, and they hope to get something passed prior to the next bill. September 17th is normally the cutoff date before the 18th starts the billing for the next billing process. We talked about holding up those figures until we can figure out what city council will do, so your new bill will reflect the new rate instead of the 200% rate. So that's where we're at as of today. That is official government and business. That's what we work on. Go ahead.
Okay. What did you propose? 30%?
130.
Right, we went back to the original 130.
Or 150, right. Some say it was 130. CT consultants thought it was 150, and I think it was just on debt service of 150. So, I mean, we were, you know, just trying to get as low as we possibly could to even get back to where we started and start from scratch, so. And I just want you guys all to know that even though, you know, we didn't come to the meetings that you had because we were not aware of them, that you were going to be discussing these issues, that we have been working on this issue and we are on all of your sides. I mean, we've been trying to get this back to where it was. We just have different methods of going about doing that, that's all. We're all, all three of us are on the same page, just doing things a little bit differently.
And I believe in discussions with the mayor, he understands cooperation and collaboration. We all have to work together. It's different times, so I think it's going to be, work out very well for everyone. You guys will be in very good shape. You'll be happy with the rate that we've negotiated, long as city council agrees, and we will spend the rest of our week working through that issue to make sure city council goes along or agrees with something that's fair for them, so.
You got, Ann Molnar's one of the council people at large, and I spoke to her at length, and she's always on the side of, you know, retirees and, you know, people on fixed incomes, and she's very concerned now, because just like I've been saying all along, you know, when city council passed the ordinance, it said it gave the administration the authority to raise the rates, but they didn't, in dollars and cents, know exactly what that meant for you guys. Just like when you guys received the letter?
We should have known.
Well, they didn't know. When you got the letter that said your bill was going to be raised by $9.24 for 100 cubic feet, did you realize that your bill was actually going to go up that much?
No, but I don't pass laws, legislation.
But they didn't even know what the actual rate was going to be. They just authorized the administration to raise the rates, but they didn't know what it was going to be.
I am for not knowing.
Well, and see, this is why I got a little more voiceless on them, is because I spoke with Ann Molnar, because Ann is normally one of reason, and I spoke with the different city council members, and what Ann told me was, "Their basements aren't flooding, ours are, and I'm not going to vote against repealing the action." Because I asked for them, when they came back in September, to repeal it back to 130% until they could go through and they could take a look at it. The law director didn't even look at this before they went through and passed it. So, and then there's other issues right now where we have one resident, there's a faulty meter, they're getting charged over $400 a month for their sewer. Basically, 26,000 gallons of water is what they're charging them a month, and there's, what they told them was, it's a mechanical meter, and mechanical meters either work or they don't work. Now, I was born at night, but it wasn't last night, and that was wrong to state that, and whoever stated that in that department is incompetent. And it continued to allow them to be charged, basically, another car payment without doing anything. I mean, that's where my frustration level comes with these elected officials in the City of Lorraine.
Well, was that a department? I don't know if that was a department person, Tom, or an elected official.
Well, that was, it was a department, and then it went through Mr. Fowler and Mr. Corey Tempco. The one individual, he was able to continue to put more pressure on them. I put calls into them, emails went out, and they told us that they will try to get out there by the end of the week to look at it, but this is something that he's been dealing with and calling up. They told him, "Well, you must have a leak in your house." Went through, he did the test. And it's just, there's some other issues where I believe the Amherst Townships know, about stories about employees going in and making comments about, "Well, we really don't care if your house burns down."
Exactly.
Now, there's going to be complaints that are going to be going to the mayor, and I hope that it's going to be more than just, "Don't do that again to that type of employee," but we're not here to debate this, we're here here for you.
We can't manage the city, so.
No, we can manage the city, but the city, you know, they talk about they want to have a partnership, they want to work with us, with other communities. It's hard to trust them when they continue to do things like this, not just this administration, but other administrations as well.
Again, and that's where we have to be the better person then, Tom, to sit down and work through it, because we can't afford these guys to have to pay when we can't discuss it.
We are, we have been singled out evenly. We've been singled out to budget Lorraine's, we're carrying out their budget on our backs. Instead of spreading it out evenly, if there's antiquated sewers and water, then it needs to spread out evenly. We all lose it.
Right.
Not just City of Lorraine, City of Lorraine, it's just council.
We can't have, when you want to talk, you have to come to the podium and state your name and address, because otherwise you can't, nobody else will hear you. Okay? Just for the future, anybody else wanting to speak, anybody can speak on this issue?
Can we start then?
You absolutely, just state your name and address and, for the record.
Good morning. My name is Christine Winrod. I'm a resident of Amherst Township. I live at 135 Hidden Tree Lane. Like to thank you for having us here today. My neighbors and I have been affected by the discriminatory decision by the City of Lorraine politicians to increase our sewer rates to an unjust and inequitable level of 200% of the in-city rate. Our purpose for being here today is to ask for immediate and swift relief from this imposed rate increase. As our elected officials, we are asking you to take action today. The nature of this decision by the leaders of the City of Lorraine to increase rates selectively on a certain demographic of customers is an opportunistic, predatory, unreasonable, and disproportionate decision. If such a decision were made in a private sector business, it would be considered gouging. The City of Lorraine Utilities Department is, in essence, a municipal monopoly, and when left to its own devices, has tyrannically imposed biased and prejudiced legislation exploiting middle-class families that have no vote, no representation, no recourse, and no ability to directly petition them for change. I've been a nurse for 23 years. I advocate daily for my patients' needs and well-being, and I don't do it with prejudice or bias. I expect you, as our elected officials, to do the same for us and advocate for us. We're your constituents, we're taxpayers, and we're voters, and we're going to remember your decision today in November. I imagine there's other people that want to speak here today. I'm going to relinquish the floor to Mrs. Ashley. Thank you. Before I relinquish the floor to Mrs. Ashley, I have many residents' names and some testimonies in here to exactly what we've been going through.
You can give those right to the clerk, and she'll forward them to everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Linda Ashley. My address is 433 Oaknall Drive, Amherst Township. Because the mayor of Lorraine, Robert Fowler, and Lorraine City Council members have intentionally chosen to exploit those to be, that they consider to be weak and powerless, those who have no ability to vote them out of office, the residents of Amherst and Sheffield Townships have been burdened by a sanitary sewer rate that is 200% of what the Lorraine City residents pay. Our township residents are now forced to ration water. We are taking military showers, we're using dehumidifier water to fill washing machines, using hand sanitizer in lieu of soap and water, and even flushing the toilet after using it two and three times. We're also not recycling anymore, and if we do recycle, we do not have the water that we can clean out the cans well enough. Can you imagine every time that you walk to your sink for a drink of water, to fill a pot for cooking, to wash your hands, or to use the bathroom, that you stop to consider how much this is costing you? Well, we do. We live it every day. This is what Lorraine politicians have forced us to do by excessively increasing the rate on a necessity, a basic need, sanitary sewers. We have residents on fixed income, single-income families, families that are already stretching their dollars to pay their bills, just like many middle-class families throughout the county. The only one difference between a middle-class family living in the township and one living elsewhere is, the township family is receiving $200 and $300 a month water and sewer bills. The middle-class family in the township doesn't get a break on summer sewer consumption from Lorraine's Water Department. No. What do we get? We get a bill that is excessively higher with a note in a large box written, "Lorraine residents get a sewer consumption discount during the months of June, July, and August", which are the very same months that we received this tremendous increase. Now, I do have a Lorraine resident's statement for their current bill that they use 26 cubic feet because they water their lawn. Their bill totaled $103.84. Of that, $36 was for sewer. If this resident lived in Hidden Valley at our current rate, his bill would have been That is a 320% increase in the bill, just because he would have lived in Hidden Valley, the township. The reduction of spending, or I'm sorry, you may think this is just a township problem, but we're here to tell you that this will be a problem for the entire county. With residents having to pay this higher rate each and every month year-round, there is no money for extras. This reduction in spending will affect businesses, restaurants, stores, et cetera. Sales tax revenue will be decreased. County levies for services such as 911, mental health, and the Lorraine County Police, Joint Police District will not receive our votes because we can't afford them. The school levies for both Lorraine County JVS and Amherst Exempted Village will also receive no votes. Mr. Kallo, Mr. Williams, and Ms. Kowski, you represent all of Lorraine County, including the citizens of Amherst and Sheffield Township. It is our expectation, that as our representatives, you will protect and defend us from the being exploited and taken advantage of by the politicians of Lorraine. We have no voice in Lorraine. You are our voice. We expect an outcome that is just and equitable. Mr. Kallo, in the August 30, 2012 edition of the Morning Journal, it was stated, quote, "Kallo said he does not agree with the rate increase," end quote. And Ms. Kowski, I spoke with you personally on the phone, and I've got an email from you stating, quote, "I will not rest until the resident sewer bills are fair," end quote. We have given you a copy of a resolution for your consideration. You'll find it at your places. A member of our township, Tom Hupman, will be covering it in entirety shortly. Can we count on your support for this resolution? While we may not be able to vote for Lorraine City Council and Lorraine Mayor, we are able to vote for the Lorraine County Commissioners. And if you are unwilling to consider and approve the resolution that we have presented with you, I can assure you that you will not be receiving our votes in November. Thank you very much for your time, and at this time, we're going to open it up for further public comments.
I live at 331 Deepwood Lane, and I'm part of the Hidden Valley Development, and of course, I'm here also to my concerns of the recent increase of our rates. But you know what? I'm going to take a different stand. I think that what upsets me the most, too, is how we want our citizens to believe in our politicians, and I just am a little bit upset, too, with the protocol of how this was taken. Mr. Kallo, I want to tell you, I much appreciate you communicating with Mr. Rittenhour. Mr. Williams, thank you for standing up for our needs. What I don't understand, Mr. Kallo, is you're telling us the mayor's looking at different avenues now to resolve this issue. Why didn't they do this from the outset? I mean, why did it come to this?
That I can't answer. I don't know.
And this is how we're supposed to believe in our politicians and get involved, and things like this happen, and this is where we, you know, the mistrust comes.
Well, I believe, if I could step in, the reason that they're reconsidering it is you, your voice. You stood up, and that's something that a lot of elected officials aren't used to, and when you stand united, you do get results. So, that's because of the groups out here that went door-to-door to get these petitions and wrote the letters to the editor and took a strong stance against the City of Lorraine that you're now getting this. So, I think you should applaud everyone that was working on that, taking the time out of their days to go around and get the residents involved, along with the Township trustees.
And I must say, appreciation to the whole Hidden Valley Development that's here today, because like you said, it's, right now, we need a lot of, a lot of people behind us.
Well, can I answer my question?
Yes.
You asked me first, and Tom answers. Actually, I don't know the answer, how it got to where it was at, but again, and we wouldn't have known about it unless there was an outcry from the residents. I mean, we wouldn't know, and like I said, one of the first phone calls I got was from Chad from Sheffield Township. When his residents called him, no one was aware of it. The trustees didn't get the letter, the Board of Commissioners didn't, because we actually had no standing in it, so they didn't notify us, and it was a contract between a developer and the City of Lorraine. So I don't know, but if it wouldn't have been brought to our attention by you folks, we wouldn't have...
Well, I think that's what's upsetting us, because the irony is, when your rates are increased by 200%, whether you know about it or not, you know what the reaction's going to be. I mean, if the roles were reversed, you know, if Amherst Township was telling Lorraine residents, you know, their rates were going up 200%, they'd get, you know, have the same reaction.
Without a doubt. But I said, we didn't know about it until I got a phone call.
Okay.
I don't think anybody up here knew about the resolution that they passed in April of this year. I wasn't aware of it, and I don't think the residents were aware of what a resolution got passed in the City of Lorraine in April.
Oh, no, I know, because a lot of us don't even have the background to...
Yeah, a lot of it, I mean, Tom was right. With you guys calling us, then we could get to the table and work with them. I only wish we could have got it done sooner, but in the City of Lorraine, city council takes an August recess, so there's no action done in the month of August, so nothing could happen. Okay?
Well...
And last week was our first meeting, so I mean, that's why this didn't...
Get resolved quicker.
Get resolved quicker, right.
Because there was no action. City council makes all actions in the City of Lorraine. They approve or disapprove by ordinance. So that's why it's been this additional month that we weren't able to accomplish anything.
Well, see, I think that's why it's important that we're here today, because, you know, you're ironing out some of these dilemmas that we weren't even aware of and the protocol and...
Right. Those are the things, sort of like I'm talking about here. We're all defending you. Nobody should have gotten that 200% increase. We think it was quite...
Drastic.
Yes.
Well, I think it's disturbing...
We had to sit down with them and see where they came up with those numbers or thought they did. We had to garner all our paper. We've all done a million requests for paperwork from the City of Lorraine, our sanitary engineering department. Ken Carney has worked wonderfully with us. He happens to be a Hidden Valley resident.
Right.
And going back to the early 70s, reading, anywhere from past ordinances, resolutions proposed, authorities of safety, service directors from the early 70s directly, but no signed contract of a rate agreement. That's one of the issues that I'm doing with the city of Lorraine. When we get this done, it has to be by ordinance, so the rate can't flux wherever it goes. It becomes a standing rate. So, if, you know, they can't just arbitrarily change anybody who isn't under a rate agreement. We'd like to get all of these fixed without, throughout the county. This isn't the only place that this could be an issue at. There's a lot of those old agreements...
Right.
That none of us were around for that. So, I mean, other than Denny Abraham's probably old enough. Well, Denny's an old-time, a longtime developer, not old-time Denny, and you understand the way they did these practices back then. We're not aware. They're starting to come to light now, and Ken Carney can tell you, because he worked privately back then. These were all done between a developer putting in streets and deciding to build houses in a community. It never went through the new process required now, which is under our facility planning area, and the 201s. And we've got Rob Burner here from Oracle I saw. Rob can tell you, we share a 201 area, you know, where whoever gets first...
Right.
None of those practices were in place back in the early '70s, whoever they could get to and negotiate with. So, again, if these things start moving up, they're all coming to light that in the last 30 years didn't happen. When we negotiated with the city of Lorraine a few years back, myself and Mr. Cordez in executive session for a Westside sewer, we discussed a fixed rate.
Okay, right.
Okay, so, those are the only history that any of us really have here. These are things, again, from 40 years ago that are popping up now.
Well, I think that's the intimidating thing, because if Christine and Linda didn't even start the ball rolling with this, we probably would have sat back grumbling, you know, in front of our living rooms and take, you know, take it. But, you know, it took this to really bring all this about, and you're kind of like, kind of showing us that, you know what, we make mistakes, too, and we didn't do all our homework. And I think what's disturbing today, too, is because, are you aware of this letter that he sent, Mr. Rittenhour? It was dated September 12th?
Yeah, the press release he sent, yes.
Okay, well, some of the points were, like he said, our safety service director, his job is to protect the interests of the city of Lorraine, and he's done so. Well, I don't think, is that, you know, to rob Peter to pay Paul? I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, he can do his job, but who are you affecting, you know, to increase these rates? And then one more thought on this, and Mayor Rittenhour, I understand potshots aren't, you know, a good way to resolve issues, but he goes on to say, "Neither Mayor Rittenhour nor any city representation was present to defend the city's position." Well, that's sort of how we feel. We weren't there either to defend our...
Today? I see you're talking about being here today?
No. Well, this is his memo that he wrote today. No, when the potshots from Mr. Williams, and he said, "The potshots came when neither Mr. Rittenhour nor any city representation was present to defend the city's position." Well, that's how we feel. We were never there either to represent how we felt about this increase. But that was okay to increase it by 200 percent.
That's why you have us.
Right, which I, that's why I'm standing here to appreciate, you know, the communication and to try to get this resolved in a better way.
You have to go to the mic.
Okay, I got a little mic, Christine.
Well, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just real quick, Christine Winrod, 135 Hidden Tree Lane, Amherst Township. I spoke with Chase Rittenhour on the telephone personally. He was invited to be here today, and he could have very well shown up with anyone from the city to come and defend their position.
He wasn't talking about today, he was talking about previous...
But he was welcome to be here today to come and defend their position.
Yeah, I asked him to come today. He couldn't make it today.
Christine, excuse me, can I answer your question, though? You made a comment?
Yes.
Okay, I thought maybe you wanted dialogue back and forth. You're probably best up there if you want to say something back to me.
I just wanted that to be brief. I didn't want to make it a big conversation.
Okay, and then we'll let you, you can go next, Mr. Van Truen. But anyway, Christine, in speaking, again, we met with the mayor for a couple hours yesterday. He's finishing up with paperwork and speaking with some of his city council to get this addressed on Monday, so him being here is probably the best use of his time when we're trying to resolve this situation.
Somebody could have been here today. I'm just saying, someone could have.
And I believe what he was referring to was at the meeting where I left voicemails for him and for Mr. Fowler, because I got a call from Mr. Parsons saying that they, Mr. Fowler said he didn't receive a call from any of the commissioners, so I called him. And after not really hearing anything back, I came out and my, I guess, pot shot was, "You're gouging the citizens in the other communities that you, they can't vote for you." So, I guess that was the issue. And then when the comment was made that Lorraine City Council didn't understand what they passed, basically, I said, "Shame on them, because you should understand what you're passing and how it's going to affect other people." I took a look at the resolutions that went through the city of Lorraine. It was very generic, and they went through and they passed it, and maybe they didn't document everything in the meeting notes, but basically, it's politics. And you even told me this, Mr. Kallo. They, they understand. It's a way that they can go through and create revenue without having an increase to their residents, so...
Well, they have to have justification for it all.
Well, Mr. Fowler gave the justification at the Amherst Township meeting. Other cities do it, and they should be lucky, because we could go to 150 percent. That was his attitude.
Yeah, but that's, he's wrong.
He's not the person who makes the decision. It's sort of like Jim Cordez can't make those decisions as our administrator. He does the recommendations to the council and the mayor's office.
But he was representing the city, and if Mr. Cordez went through and made such an arrogant statement to the residents...
And I wasn't there, so you guys were there, I can't. I didn't get invited, so...
They were, well, it was Amherst Township meeting. You can go to those anytime.
Yeah, but I mean, that wasn't on the agenda. I've been there before.
It's, it's just one of these statements, 150 percent. That's our justification. That's where these people are getting upset, because Mr. Rittenhour was the one that hired this individual, and then, you know, he doesn't have to face it, because he doesn't live in the county. He lives on a strong still, so... But...
Phil Van Truen, 171 Harris Street, Amherst. I'm an Amherst City Councilman. Not here to get up on a soapbox. In fact, initially, I want to sort of defend the county commissioners and ask that you give them the benefit of the doubt. Of course, their hands are a little bit tied in this situation. I don't think any of us think that they really want your sewer rates to be 200 percent higher than those of the residents in the city of Lorraine. Having said that, though, I do think that there is something you can do immediately to help remedy this situation, and that is to make sure that you pass that resolution. It'll show support for these residents who are here today. It'll show that you support them in their fight against an entity that I think's bullying them. And I'll also remind you that in the past, I think that the Board of Lorraine County Commissioners has not hesitated to pass resolutions that really don't have anything to do with your job, resolutions against the Iraq War and other things. This is an opportunity for you to pass a resolution that is directly associated with your job, that's directly associated with standing up for residents who can't stand up for themselves in this situation, and to show real leadership. Hemming and hawing and waiting to see how this plays out, that's not leadership, because I think a lot of people are waiting to see if this goes away and waiting to see if they can stretch it out until Election Day, when a lot of people here are afraid that it won't get taken care of after that. So, show some leadership. Please do the right thing. Pass this resolution. Go to Lorraine City Council, read it before Lorraine City Council, and give these people the support and the leadership that they deserve from their county elected officials. Thank you.
Give me one second, man. My turn to respond, though, so, and no offense, Mr. Van Truen, we're running against each other. But I haven't read the resolution, because I didn't get it ahead of time. It's sitting here on my desk.
It's not my, it's not my resolution.
Oh, okay, all right.
I had nothing to do with it.
Oh, okay, all right. The resolution, I haven't seen it. Apparently, you've read it, though. You've seen it. Okay, I haven't read it as of yet. But in regards to showing the support, and if we drag out to election, and I've never politicized my job here as a commissioner, as I've said, I've been doing this since the 1st of July, and you've got a township trustee next to you that can tell you so, that I've been there at the table and trying to get this rectified, that they will have this by September 17th, hopefully next Monday, a new deal in place that is fair and equitable. So, I haven't read the resolution yet, so I would have to read through it. Okay. Pardon me? Christine?
I'm sorry?
You said something, that's all.
I was speaking...
Oh, okay.
Well, if you want, we can take five minutes and let you read it.
Well, there's people speaking, and I'm not going to stop them.
I don't know that it's a good idea to sign this today. If it doesn't get resolved by Monday, then I will sign it on next Wednesday.
Wait a minute now. See, well, hold on first. Resolutions that come before this board, as far as the Bring Jobs Home Act, where you put it in front of me the day of, and we have to sign this right away.
That's not because I just got it today. That's not why I don't want to sign it. I'm saying, cool heads will prevail. We've been in discussions, we're this close, you know, and I believe that city council and the mayor administration is going to rectify this. I believe every person sitting in this room is going to be happy with the results. And if they're not, if you're not by next Monday, then I will sign this next Wednesday at our next meeting. You're worried that it's going to, it's not even going to go onto your next bill. This hopefully will be resolved before you get your next water sewer bill. So, you can't wait until Wednesday?
No, 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 no.
Why?
It's a fair resolution. It's cut and dry. You can sign it, you can vote for it today. It's going to be read in front of all of us and on your reporting, and even in the paper. It's cut and dry. It's easy. It's either yes or no.
I mean, not to put Mr. Parsons on the spot, but you read this resolution, correct?
Yes, I have.
Do you feel it's a fair resolution?
Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Williams, yes, I have read the resolution, but unfortunately, I don't sign it. That's up to the other...
No, I'm just wondering how you feel.
Oh, absolutely. I feel that it's written quite well. A lot of effort and participation from the residents of Amherst Township went into getting this ready, but yes, I do. I feel that the commissioners could, you know, sign it without no recourse from anybody.
You don't think the city of Lorraine, I mean, I haven't read it yet, I have no idea what's in there. Is it going to be a detriment at the table with the city of Lorraine and make them, I don't know what the word is, but aggravated that they're not going to want to deal with us and work towards a resolution to this?
It's the right thing to do.
You know, I don't think, I think it's just a...
I mean, it's the right thing to do.
The right thing to do is to reverse their bills back to where they were.
And if they get the resolution in there, I mean, they can't say, "You know what? You hurt my feelings, so I'm not going to do it." I mean, they're elected officials.
Well, I'm not saying that. I don't even know what it says, but I'll reserve my decision until I actually hear it. You said somebody's going to read it to us? I'll wait.
I guess what I meant, the board? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm just going to, no, you're fine. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Kallo said. Yes, I, as elected official of Sheffield Township, started receiving calls from township residents, and of course, my job as the elected official is to represent them all equally. So, the first ear I was able to get into was Commissioner Kallo's ear for being a resident, or being a business owner in our township. So, I went right to him, and I says, "Mr. Kallo, what can we do?" His response to me was, "This is the first I've seen this." You know, and I says, "Well, okay, well, you know, I assure you, you know, this is what's being done." I had residents, you know, give me their bills, and he said, "I'll take, I'll take a look at it and do what I need to do to, you know, work with you guys to resolve the situation." I commend Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Kokoski for acting on this. I think that the only way this is going to be resolved is cooperation and collaboration through all of us. It did put some of our residents in financial distress, and I encourage Lorraine to reduce their rates. It's, it's, we just need to do the fair and equitable thing, you know, and we have, we all have our own personal opinions on this matter, but the bottom line is, we should work together to come up with something that's fair and equitable. Let's see, I wrote a couple notes, so. I encouraged Lorraine Council and administration just to do what's right. It's, it's a shame that we had to come this far, but through cooperation and professionalism with all parties that's involved in this, I think we can come up with something to do it, and we just need to do work together. Local government needs to just work together, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm Kathy O'Shaughnessy. I live at 918 Deer Run Drive in the Hidden Valley, Amherst Township. I would certainly like to thank Mr. Williams for your continued support and communication back to us. My husband and I have written letters to the local newspapers. They have been published in the editorial comments, and I wish more people probably would have, but I thank the newspapers also for publishing and open to accepting those letters. I took some petitions around, I took some flyers around to probably 100 houses in the Hidden Valley area. It is so sad to see that these families are paying this outrageous cost when we have a contract. I don't care if it went back to 1970s. Our constitution is how old, and we're still abiding by it. And in order to amend that existing contract, the city of Lorraine should have come to the people that that affected, and our trustees. So, they should have gone to the trustees. The trustees come to Hidden Valley, call a meeting. Why didn't this happen? Because they're railroading through an unfair increase. And what will cause them from not doing this again? So, we want the, we got together, I thank Linda, I thank Christine, I thank Bob Walter, who's worked horribly hard on all of this, and his wife Kathy, and my neighbors behind us in Stone Valley. We all got together, and we want it known that the citizens of Hidden Valley and Amherst don't, we want our existing contract enforced. That's the bottom line here. We don't want to talk about going to another sewer sanitary management, anything like that. We want the existing contract enforced by the commissioners. If you could please support that. And we want our money back that we've already paid. If 820 homes are in Hidden Valley, and each one had the very minimal of $50, that's probably a senior citizen living alone, okay, a month. There's $41,000 in one month to Lorraine. But everyone I talked to that I went to their door, knocked on, talked to them, those hard-working families with little kids who couldn't be here, they had a hundred, $100 increase. They're paying $300 for a water bill. They're taking away from their groceries. This is ridiculous. So, we're talking like $200,000 Lorraine got from us in like the last two months. No, we want, we want this agreed on today. It can't wait any longer. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Shelley Ostrolanky, 487 Oaknall Drive in Amherst Township. And first of all, Ted, I do need to correct you in a opening statement. I'm sorry, do you prefer I call you Mr. Kallo when I'm up here?
Call me, Ted. We go back forty-plus years.
Forty years, okay. You made a statement in the beginning stating that this was our first increase. I'm sorry, but I need to correct you on that, because I went through our bills, starting with last May, May of 11. On my November 18th to December 16th Bill of 11, our sewer rate went from 569 to 614 per cubic foot, which, per 100 cubic foot, excuse me, which is an increase of 8 percent.
I believe, Shelley, but that was the increase that the city of Lorraine residents had called, so I think it's an equal, some rate increase. Yours, this one here they just did, went from the 130 rate to 200.
Okay, well, in your, in your statements, you said it was first increase, so you didn't specify there had been across the board.
But it was an increase based on just raising the percentage.
Okay.
That's, we've been discussing the percentage rate, so that was, I was...
That's fair. On my February 20th to March 19th Bill, our water rate went from 323 to 340 per 100 cubic foot. That's an additional 5 and 1/4 percent increase. That's an additional 5 and 1/4% increase. Then, of course, our May 18th to June 20th, our sewer rate went from 614 to 943 per 100 cubic foot, which is an additional 53 and 1/4% increase. This equates to a 44% increase in one-year period. That's three increases in less than a year. My consumption from May 11th to May of '12 was 164,000 cubic feet, costing me $1,503. Based on this, if my consumption remains exactly the same from May 12th to May of '13, my cost for that same 100 cubic, or, I'm sorry, 164 cubic feet will cost me $2,104, which is an additional $601 for a 12-month period. My husband and I do not have the luxury of voting ourselves a pay raise. And unlike government, we have to work within a balanced budget. Therefore, the only alternative I have to come up with that 100, or $601 is we can't vote for the policing or the school levies that are on the ballot this November. And I apologize to anyone here for the school board, works for the school system, anyone that's part of the policing. I'm sorry, I can't afford it.
Hi, I'm Barbara Cadkick. I live at 6626 Overland Road, Amherst Township. I have two brief statements. The first one is when I called to complain about my water bill, I was told by someone in the water office, the reason that they went to this 200%, which I said was just an awful rate, is they said, "Well, we don't wanna keep going back to council because we're going to have to, to increase it over and over again to pay for this flooding problem that other people have spoken about." So I think we need to keep our eye on the ball. Whatever agreement you reach with them, is this just gonna be temporary and they're gonna keep increasing our rate? I don't think that's fair.
Not to interrupt your question. No, the idea is, and I wish I had the letter I sent off to the Mayor the other day, that is to do it a rate done by ordinance that doesn't give the flexibility there. It would tie you into the in-city rate.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing.
Hopefully, 130% you currently, well, did pay, not currently. That would be by ordinance. It wouldn't be the flexi, currently, there's no contract. It can be whatever, I guess. Not that it's right, but it can be whatever. So that's what we're trying to resolve, or I have been, and Commissioner Kokowski and everybody discussing, by ordinance, to have that done. Again, hoping to have it done by next Monday evening so that you can reflect the savings on the next bill.
Okay, and then second comment I have is I keep reading in the newspaper, and I know some comments were made at the township meeting that I watched on the, they televised it. I think we need to be very, very careful of this idea of regionalism. I know there's a lot of articles about, not just in Ohio, but across, across the country, where you take different regions and work together and supposedly it's supposed to benefit everybody because it's supposed to bring down the cost. The problem is, we're voters, and when you go to regionalism, as we see happening today, Amherst Township gets their water from Lorraine City, we can't vote for Lorraine officials. So you, as our representatives, as Commissioners, I think you need to keep your eye on the ball on that, too. Is regionalism good for the voters? Do we lose our right to vote on these issues? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
With regionalism, though, one thing I wanna talk about, townships, they work together. They have a problem, they can contact another township, and they work together to get the job done and to keep the costs low. The difference with that is when you have a regional approach, it's only as good as your elected officials. And with the townships, they have some of the great elected officials that are out there working because they wanna better their community. So there's other areas that do it. In North Ridgeville, Avon, Avon Lake, when you have great leadership, it can be effective. But when your leadership tries to take advantage of you, you're right, then the voters don't have a voice on it.
Okay, and I also wanna thank you guys for taking up this issue and helping us out.
You're welcome.
My name is Karen Stipe. I live at 7495 Hidden Glen Drive. This has affected my family tremendously. On a nurse's salary, I cannot afford this. What bothers me the most is I've talked with senior citizens and they cannot afford their medications. They have to make a decision, do I get my medications this month or do I pay my sewer bill? This, to me, affects a quality of life for a lot of people, and it really bothers me. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Toth. I've lived at 6601 Rosedale Avenue in Hidden Valley for over 30 years. So I've pretty much seen it all. Now, the one, the one thing, and you're gonna say, a person that's lived for so long doesn't look to the future, that stays in the same place. No, I've always looked to the future, and Hidden Valley was always a jewel to live in. Now, you have your politicians that have decided now to rape the Amherst Township and Sheffield Village, which, before I moved to Amherst Township, I lived in Sheffield Village. Imagine that. Now, something has got to be done. And yes, Mr. Kallo, my sister used to play with your cousin Danny.
Okay.
Okay, so...
It was actually my uncle Dan. That wasn't my cousin, that was my uncle Dan.
Your uncle? Well, I'm showing my age. I'm 62, what can I say?
He passed away earlier this year.
I'm sorry. My sister did also.
Oh, wow, sorry to hear that.
See, they were after each other. They went in death.
Well, my family's longstanding in the village.
That's, oh, yes. But what I'm getting at is the house that's right across the street from me, in the jewel of Lorraine County, is a nice house. It has been owned by four different people, I would say at least four, within, over the last 25 years. It has sat empty now for almost a year. There is a service that comes to cut the grass, to keep, so it doesn't look shoddy. There's a house down on, on our street that is also now empty. And now I'm getting to looking to the future. Has not the Mayor of Lorraine considered what people look at when they're going to buy a new home? This is so terrible. We've had people with young children, that's who buy new homes. Do you think that they could afford? I'm an old lady. My son lives with me. I have a $103 water bill. These people that have $300 water bills, it's outrageous. I've been on disability for 12 years. That means when I got sick from being a nurse 12 years ago, my income is the same today as it was 12 years ago. Now, you talk about a fixed income, that's pretty low.
Yep.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rob Wirth. I live at 302 Deepwood Lane, and thank you for having us today. I'm the person that Mr. Williams referenced in the beginning of the, of the meeting. I had the $447 water bill. My situation's a little bit different. I'll give you a real brief timeline of it. Not much of a public speaker here, so.
Take your time.
But in the spring, I had my house sited. When they sited, they covered up the touchpad that's on there, that they normally use to read the meter. So the water department contacted me and said that they need to get in the house and put a radio unit on the meter. So we set it up, it came July 3rd, and when the bill came for that month, for the end of that month, part of it had the, it was probably about 10 or 12 days, it didn't have the meter, the new radio unit on, and the rest of it did. And that was $370. And they said, I used 25 CFs, which is, I think it came out to, uh, no, I don't have it here. But, so then...
30,000 gallons.
Yeah, and my normal average prior to this had always been right around 7.5. So then the next bill comes out, it's $447, and this one has the radio unit for the whole entire month. That came out to 26,180 gallons or 770 gallons a day. Now, we haven't changed anything. We don't have a pool, we don't have a sprinkler system, you know, we do, you know, we do the normal thing. So next day, I took off some work, I went down to the water department, they told me that we probably have a leak. So I said, "Well, fair enough, I'll check that." Went home, I put the toilet, the dyes in the toilet and did those kinda tests, there was nothing. The meter never moved at all for the entire day, not just for the hour. I came back home that day and nothing had moved, so. Called back up there, they sent a meter reader out there to check the radio, which all he did was look at it and say, "Well, it works from the outside," so that's really about it. That's all they could do. They didn't, they didn't take anything off or calibrate anything or, you know, whatever they needed to do. Yeah, and so, so, you know, I then, I called Puko, who said that since it's a city, they can't do anything about it. So then I called the Safety Service Director, and I've tried for the last four days now, since last week, every day calling, and they keep taking my information again and again, and nothing seems to happen. So I haven't gotten any calls on it. I guess my point is, is the, as well as 200% increase, it just, to me, is showing the unwillingness of the City of Lorraine to work with us on mechanical matters or obviously with the increase. So it's just exacerbating the amount. I mean, it's just outrageous, so. I mean, and then I even did, I wrote this up last night, and from Friday to today, or to last night, my meter went up five CFs. That's 3,740 gallons in four days, which is totally wrong. But I'm not getting any response back for any rectification or, you know, any kind of...
Mr. Wirth's 303 Depot, is that your address you said?
302 Deepwood.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was trying to remember what you said.
Yeah, they have the information. I contacted the city regarding it, and it did go to Mr. Tempco. So he's, he told me that they were going to be sending somebody out.
Yeah, and they hadn't called yet, so...
So we'll wait and see, but when I did talk with the lady that told you it was a mechanical issue, so it either works or it doesn't work, I actually went through and I explained to her how a mechanical system works and then electronic system, and the programming or the dip switches inside of it have to be off, and it could be a simple mistake. And they told me that they will look at going out there and replacing that sensor for you.
That was another thing, the whole time...
Sounds like a radio communicator.
Yeah, and the whole time, they were, they were just insistent that their, their equipment is spot on, there's no issues. I mean, you know, how do I go about that?
Fight City Hall.
And I also, yeah, exactly. And also, just to throw in there, I even had a plumber come out, too. A certified plumber gave me a letter, and I have copies of all my bills going back, as well as the certified letter, as well as my timeline, so I'd like to present that.
Thank you, yeah. I hope you're accepting to the rule. I hope.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just make sure your situation's worse than everybody else's, but still, yeah. Hopefully you get that resolved soon.
Forgot one of my pages.
My name is Robert Jump. I live at 6629 Allendale Drive in Hidden Valley in Amherst Township. My wife and I have lived there for 33 years, and we've never had problems like this. Before I get into anything more, I'd like to ask if the talks with the City of Lorraine have included any type of a refund for our, or a credit, or anything for the July, August, and September bills?
Those were brought up in discussion.
Okay.
They haven't returned my call, so...
Yeah, okay. At the end of June 2012, we did receive the letter from the City of Lorraine. It did not define in our letter exactly what the increase was going to be. It just said, "An increase." Well, until we got our bills. Just as an example, our June 1st bill was a total of $38.70, which is a little bit low, but it was still reasonable. 64.2% of that was for sewer. Our July bill was a total of $230.64, 73.5% of it sewer. August, $205.10, 73.5% sewer. Admittedly, we used more water because we were watering our garden, we were watering our flower beds, and our little grandson has a pool that we'd fill, not a big one, just a little one. So we used more water, admittedly. But that water doesn't go into the sewers. If anything, it goes into the storm sewer.
Right.
Which is not going to Lorraine, it's going to Avon Lake. So this, this really infuriated me. Infuriated everybody, I think. And when we did get these bills, again, the City of Lorraine had the gall to put that notice on there that their citizens would receive a summer discount while we're being raped by this city.
Sir, actually, Mr. Kallo and I, we did talk to the City of Lorraine yesterday, and that was one of the things we argued for you guys, was to try to get you also the same discount that the City of Lorraine residents get.
Even if they gave us an outdoor meter.
Or that, there was two issues.
One of those two, because...
Correct.
I mean, if you're watering, somebody that has a pool has to fill their pool for some reason.
Right.
I mean, 73% of their bill in the sewer, it's not going into the sewer.
Correct.
Well, when I had a talk with Mr. Fowler about that, his response to me was, "Well, even though you're using water outside, it's seeping into the sewer and it's going to Lorraine and it's causing it to flood."
Not the sanitary sewer, it's not. It better not be.
I see Mr. Carney back there.
It better not be.
Mr. Carney, I believe you had a talk with one of the Amherst Township trustees, and you felt that that was kinda ludicrous, that statement by Mr. Fowler, is that correct? That the water is seeping into their sewers and causing it to flood? Can you hear me back there? Okay. Mr. Uh, Mr. Carney, Mr. Fowler stated, can you hear me? I know the speakers don't go back that far. Okay. Well, we'll talk about that later, but that was just one of the comments from Mr. Fowler.
Mr. Fowler had been invited to the August 14th, 2012 Amherst Township Trustees Meeting, and he said that he had no reason to, to inform the trustees or any elected officials about this because this was between their customers and the City of Lorraine. And he gave the following reasons why this increase had to go through, and I'm quoting from a quote he made in the August 19th edition of the Chronicle Telegram. "The residents of Illyria, Sheffield, and Amherst Townships have been getting such a good deal for such a long time. The deal was 150% over what Lorraine City residents paid, and then it pushed it to 200%. To me, 150% was illegal in the first place because we had a contract negotiated by Mr. Gargus for 130%. So it's a violation of the law."
Mr. Jump, just like, because we're discussing, I mean...
Yes.
It was just an agreement. There was never a contract by ordinance. That's our, that's our problem, that's what we're trying to work out now.
An agreement to me, an agreement is a legal binding, I mean, in the law, from what I've heard in courts, it's legal.
That's the discussion point. That's where we're getting to.
Right.
I spoke to that earlier with someone. We're trying to...
Contract is in the agreement.
Pardon me?
The word "contract" is in the agreement.
Correct. But not passed as a, that's the, that's the wording we're trying to get through to get this fixed. Those are the type of things, exactly, you brought up.
And we're trying to do this with calmness and, you know, everybody, let's sing kumbaya together, let's get this done without having to get attorneys, you guys paying for attorneys, and we pay for attorneys, and the city's paying for attorneys.
My blood pressure's gone up too much with this. And I don't want it to go up anymore.
You know, we're trying to do that without attorneys getting involved, because that gets very expensive, and I think we're very close.
It's a waste of time and money to get the attorneys involved.
Exactly, but that's what would happen if we did not sit down with them and get an agreement with them. That means attorneys would get involved, and they're the ones that make the money.
Yeah, now, this was the agreement, okay. Right from this contract, it was that the Safety Service Director of the City of Lorraine, Ohio be, and he is hereby authorized to enter into a contract agreement with Edward Gargus Developer for the furnishing of water to the Hidden Valley subdivision in Amherst Township from the City of Lorraine.
Jerry?
There's no rate there. That's why, they didn't have a solidified rate in the contract. And there's a lot of other language we don't wanna get into today.
Okay.
Okay, that's, okay, there's not a, we wanna get what we have done in other areas in the past, so everybody's aware, and when Mr. Cortez and I had negotiated with Lorraine in the past when we were trying to do the West Side Sewer, was a... to do the West Side sewer, was a contracted rate that was done by ordinance, not language, but an actual hard rate. And that's what we're trying to get done next Monday. So, see, that's, it's the language part of it, legalese, and I'm not an attorney, but I think I read pretty well. So I think we can work through that and get to that end. That's what we're trying to get done.
Everything that you're talking about is in our resolution today.
Go ahead, keep, keep going. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine. That's no problem. Um, the second reason Mr. Fowler said that the increase was mandatory, that the previous administration had been taking money out of the utilities accounts and putting it into the general fund. And that is not our problem, that they have thieves in that government. A third reasons, Lorain wants to build a $65 million tunnel to control sanitary and stormwater runoff. However, Hidden Valley's storm sewers do not go to Lorain. They go to Avon Lake. And why should we pay for what they haven't done in the past? And they should have been budgeting for this in the past. Amherst Township has 820 residences. Sheffield Township, 136 residences that are affected by this. And he also stated that Lorain had been subsidizing these areas, namely Hidden Valley and parts of Sheffield Township, for at least eight years. Please. I have never in my life met a man more arrogant, insolent, that he could stand up there and, and talk this way to people. I mean, if he doesn't know what he's talking about, at least say, "I'll have to get back to you." But if you don't know what you're talking about, don't say something that's, that's a flat-out lie, which he did in so many cases. Why didn't he ask for us, if they need money so bad, why didn't they ask for the City of Lorain residents to pay for more? Because it would have been a one, a one-term administration, and he would have been out of a job too. Real quick, Mr. Fowler doesn't even live in Lorain County, as was mentioned before, and he also was involved in these things in the City of Worcester, from what we hear. We have the ability to go to alternate natural gas and electric suppliers if we feel that we're being gouged. And we've done it with our gas company. But the City of Lorain has a monopoly on us. We don't have a choice. We never had a choice. If we would, if they feel that they can't service us for any particular reason, well, why don't we look at another supplier? Let them say, "Okay, we'll sign off. Look for another supplier." At least we have an option. And I also thank Mr. Ennis for your diligent work on trying to help us with this mess from a legal aspect. Uh, we urge the commissioners, again, to read this document, this resolution that's presented to you very carefully, and to please sign it as quickly as possible. The elections are coming up very soon. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pat Young. My husband Larry and I live at 478 Oaknill Drive, Hidden Valley. We've lived there 20 years. We're in the old people category. We're past 70. When we moved in in 1992, our son lived with us, and our water bills were approximately $22, $24. Now, 2012, there's just two of us. And for May, June, and July, our water bills were in excess of $800. Now, we do have a water, a sprinkler system, which we use very sparingly. It's either do we replace all of our flowers, our yard, everything, or do we spend water, money on water? And we were told also that the water would somehow seep into the sewer. Um, it was a joke when my husband called every year from 1992. Every time there was a new mayor, he would call, and he got the same ridiculous replies. Nobody wanted to talk to us. Finally, last year, uh, in pure disgust, we called and they said, "Well, we'll send someone out and let's talk about a second meter." Well, again, that was, that was ridiculous because they, they gave us the paperwork, what we had to do to have a second meter for our sprinkler system. And it was a yearly check, which I think amounted to, or yearly inspection, I'm sorry, $75. Um, we had to change our water pipes. I don't understand the mechanics of it, but it, for us, it was a lot of work. And so, we decided that we just couldn't do it. Now, Chad, we have, um, we have an apartment in Sheffield Township. So we were getting a double whammy because we not only were paying Amherst Township, but Sheffield Township as well. And I just, I'm just appalled that all of this has, has gotten so far out of hand. And I certainly plead with all of you to, to listen to what we have to say. And an election is coming up, and we have very good memories. Even though we're old, we have very good memories. So thank you for listening to us, and, and please do the right thing.
Hello, my name is David Ureg. I'm at 359 Deepwood Lane, and I believe the people here have done a very good job expressing the situation. I don't want to belabor the point. Briefly, I would like to add a couple of points that I feel weren't touched upon. And one is the lack of control. Uh, we went through a series of rate increases, then there was this, uh, going to twice the city's rate, and there's rumors there may be other increases coming down the line. What it puts you into the position of, not only is with this increase now, is it difficult, but you don't know what it's going to be next year. You can't budget for it. It's like a crapshoot. Every time you get the bill, what's it going to be? And it's very frustrating. It's very scary. And as was said before, this is a necessity. You have to have this. You, you can cut out cable. You can cut out a cellphone even. Yeah, even a cellphone in this age, you can go without it. You can't go without the water and sewer. You've got to have it. You cannot use it. You can move away. You've still got the water there. You're still going to get a minimum bill. I mean, it's there. It's almost like a tax. Okay, you have to pay it. You can't economize. You can only economize so much. Okay, I'm a bottom feeder. I economize. I got three to four cubic feet per month. That's what I use, right on the cusp. You know, my bill went from the mid twenties to $40 a month. And the last one was a little bit more. It was 50, 52. Okay, so I'm looking at it. Like Mrs. Ash Jolinki said, that's a 44% increase. You know, where is it going to stop? I don't know. I don't know. Now, I, they'll put you in the position, what am I going to cut out? Uh, so it's that lack of control is scary. You don't know. You don't know. And that's another reason why we need a contract. We need something where at least we have the certitude that this is the way it's going to be, and it's going to be there for a while. You can plan. You can budget.
I agree, David. That's where we've got to get to. We've got to get it done as a contract, as a rate that's done by ordinance.
Yeah, and it's got to be the 130% rate, because the city has already said that they're going to, they have an 8% increase this year, and then all the way through 2015, and then additional, I can't remember if it was 1 or 3%, all the way through 2021. So, while they do have the authority to do that, and that's going to impact all residents on that system, um, you can't agree to come back and say, "Well, you're at 200%, so we'll knock it down to 150, so you're getting a good deal." Just remember that there's going to be additional rate increases coming up as well.
Okay, and the second element I wanted to touch on is, it's been alluded to, discussed briefly, uh, part is justification for the rate increases, et cetera, but it came out flooding, flooding in City of Lorain. And the illusion is that it's a cause, uh, somehow the line, this area, these areas are a cause to flooding in the City of Lorain. Uh, but I can't really buy that. As far as the Amherst Township area, that's feeding off a 15-inch line. You've got 15 inches worth of liquid coming out of that line. That's all you're going to get. You're not going to get 36 inches into a 15-inch line. And what's going to happen is that it's going to start to back up. And I wanted to add that it has backed up. I've heard people having sewer backups. Eden Township, that's something you hear complaints in city, but no, it happens in the township too. We're up, and we're on the, the end of it. So, that and, you know, water, you know, water issues too. We have water issues too in the township, many, many issues. And we're working to resolve those, and we'd work with the City of Lorain, I'm sure, to get drainage issues, uh, rectified. We're not against that. And if there's some problems with sewers, we'll work with them to try to find outlets for stormwater and intrusion. But I, I wanted to bring that up, that, you know, we have flooding here too. And you're only going to get so much in that line, and then after that's going to back up on the other end, and it is backing up on the other end. So I don't think we can be vilified and blamed for all the problems in the City of Lorain. There's a limit. There's a limit. And if the system, my problem treated as a system, my problem don't treat it as one area, causing something for the whole system when it's really the whole system. Okay, but that's what I wanted to add real quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for all your work. Tom, and Tom, Ted, Larry, Jerry, all of you.
Thank you.
Even you, Jim.
Thank you.
You too, Cortez.
Good morning. My name's Larry Young. I'm Pat Young's husband, and I'm way past 70. This started for me back in 1992. When we had our lawn put in, and it was a new house, when we had our lawn put in, I made the decision to put in a sprinkling system so that we could water the lawn. My wife had done that for years when we lived in Sheffield Township, and pulling that sprinkler around every 45 minutes was a real problem. So we put a sprinkler system in. The contractor that put the sprinkler system in did all of the landscaping. Was a certified landscaper. He used conventional equipment, but did it to regulations at 1992 time. Now, I know those have changed considerably since that time, but it, it was put in with the intention of putting a second meter into the line. So there was an 18-inch space that was provided to cut the line out and put the meter in when it was approved. So I began talking. I, I worked in Illyria. We were living in Amherst Township. I know the City of Amherst allows a second meter. I know the City of Illyria allows a second meter to cut down on those sewer rates. Lorain would not do that. They continually fought me year after year. I went to city council meetings and fought in city council just to get a second meter put in to give some regulation to this. I was not allowed to do that. With all of the discussions that I'd had with city council members, there came a point in time around 1998 that Lorain says, "Gee, I think we'll give our city residents a break in their water bills in the summer." Now, that, that was a direct slap in my face. Absolutely direct slap in the face. So from that point on, I didn't have much to do with Lorain. I still don't. About a year and a half ago, I made another phone call in desperation because we are on a fixed income. These costs and everything are continually going up. So I went back and called the City of Lorain again. The gentleman says, "Well, you've just been talking to the wrong person all these years." Yeah. I believed that like nothing. So he came out. Now, I had a backflow prevention device installed at the time the sprinkler system was put in to code. Now, well, it's not in the right place. It has to be moved over here, and we have to change this line so that it's in a different position here. And then yearly, you have to have it inspected. Now, I understand that because we had that in Illyria. I don't know about Amherst, but I know in Illyria, we had that inspection done on an annual basis. And there is a cost to that. I, I understand that. But changing everything in the lines, I had to take the backflow prevention device and put it outside instead of having it inside. There was no way I could hook anything else into that line. So the only water that was going through the backflow prevention device or the meter, which was right beside it, there was no way I could put anything else into that system. I'm, I can't afford it. I can't afford to put that in now. So that's, that's our story, and it's, it's a very unhappy story. Our water bills, as she said, just for the last three months, well, for last month alone was $332. Now, I do, for the month of May, it increased, um, I have every bill, in cubic feet and, and by dollar amounts from the time we moved in. And it's... For the month of June, our water consumption went from 6 to 20. Now, that's a, I got a sprinkler system. I understand that. It's been that way every, every year. Uh, it may come July, August, and September, or it may come May, June, and July. That depends on what the weather is in that partic, in that particular year. But this, this year, it went from 6 to 20. It went from 16 to 26 in the month of July, and it went from 10 to 15 in the month of August. Our June bill was $256.18. Our July bill was $332.80, and our August bill, the last one we received, is $192.39. Of that, in June, the sewer rate bill was $188.39. July was $244.79, and August was $141.39. It's, I'm back to the point where there's some backing now. I went to people in the township, and I said, back in the early 90s, "What can we do about this?" And nobody wanted to get involved, and nobody wanted to do anything. Well, you can see, there's a lot of people that want stuff done, and we want it done now, not, not next week. Thank you.
Lynda Ashley, 433 Oaknill Drive, Amherst Township. I just have one, um, point that, Mr. Kalo, you had said that you wanted to have an ordinance that was firm from Lorain. We did have an ordinance with Lorain, and Bob Fowler authored that it be changed, and they tore it up and they rewrote a new one. Now, when Bob Fowler was at our township meeting on August 14th, my husband stood up. He, first of all, Mr. Fowler led us to believe that it was city council's fault that our rates went up. He didn't say that he had authored it. Until after we pulled the ordinance off the Lorain City's website, my husband read it to him, where he had authored it, and said the author was Bob Fowler. And at that point, he did admit he authored it. At that point also, my husband asked him, "What is to stop you from ripping up this current ordinance today, tomorrow, next week, rewriting it and increasing it from 200% to 300, 400, whatever the case may be? What's to stop him from increasing our water rate next?" He did not answer that question, which we have been finding out. He just will not answer our phone calls, and he does not answer a question when he does not want to give us the answer.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Okay. That's a discussion about having it by ordinance, a contracted rate that is agreed upon.
As long as it's firm.
That is, correct. That's what, that's the goal of these discussions. If not, it's still a developer's agreement out there. That's why we've got to get it back under the governance part.
Right. But what we're asking is that we make sure that we have every T crossed and every I dotted, that there is no wiggle room, that another safety director, whomever it will be that follows, or even Mr. Fowler again, that they come back in and they find some loophole, and they tear up the ordinance or the contract, and they rewrite it because they can.
We haven't seen much of that historically, once it is done the proper way. Again, this goes back to the 70s. It was a... It was an agreement for the city of Lorain to take the flow.
Right.
There was nothing else set in stone, and that's what we're trying to clean up right now.
And I understand that on the contract.
That's what we're working towards.
My fear is if it's just an ordinance written stating that they're going to charge us whatever, that somebody can go in, as Mr. Fowler has, get rid of the old ordinance and rewrite the new one to whatever it is that they feel that it can be done, and we just want protection in that area.
That's what we're, exactly.
All right.
That's what we have a county prosecutor look at things for.
All right.
I'm not an attorney, ma'am. I would never pretend to be.
I understand that, but we just want to make sure, because we've been burned once, that this isn't going to happen again.
We're doing the best we can to get this resolved for you as quickly as possible and get it to where you have protection. That's what we're working towards.
Absolutely, and that's what we're asking you to do. Thank you.
I'm Tom Huckman. I live at 309 Deepwood Lane, Amherst Township. I've lived there for 44 years. I guess I'm a senior representative. I've talked back in the 70s to Ed Gargis, so I have some background on this. And he was certainly under, and I can't speak for a dead man, but I'm telling you, he was under the impression that he had an agreement. We had this agreement. We had this discussion, and that was 30%. Now, far as I'm concerned, we're going to do negotiations. Let's don't start at 30%. Let's start at equal price. You can't tell me that we're getting in charge of an extra 30% and then start negotiating from there and say, okay, we're all equal here. We're not equal. We're paying 30% more. I have paid 30% more since 1978. Now, if they would have been, and so have a lot of other people been paid, if they would have been putting just that money aside from 78 accumulated over the years, they probably could have solved a lot of their problems just off our backs, not even counting about their own citizens. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's just plain robbery, and there's just no other way to describe it. It's bullying. We teach our kids not to bully. You talked about blackmail. I've read the comment about blackmail. You know, if you had a child and they misbehave, what's the first thing we usually do? We withhold something from them. Well, let's withhold something from our bad behavior kids, because that's what they are. You know, I heard some of the other comments, and when I got my first bill, long before any of this ever started, my bill the month before was $38, went to $154. I called down and I talked, I started through the process, and I was told, and first of all, I said, you know, it went from 38 to 154, and I wasn't home for two weeks. And the comment was, maybe one of your neighbors was using your water. And I swear on the Bible that exactly was the comment. I wrote it down. And I said, no, I have pretty good neighbors. One of them came with me today. Actually, two of them did. I said, no, I think I trust them pretty well. So I said, how about come checking the meter? They said, oh, no. He said, our meters are government inspected. They never are wrong. I mean, that gave me a whole lot of confidence in that it was government inspected, right off the bat. But he's, I swear, and I'll swear on a stack of bibles, he's exactly commenting. So I finally figured, well, I wasn't getting anywhere here. So I moved on to Mr. Timko. I called, of course, I got the secretary's phone, and I got a recording. It says, leave a message, and I'll call you back at my convenience. Not your convenience. You can call the number today. It's still on there. I just called it to find out. Okay? At my convenience, I'll call you back. Okay. Well, you know, three weeks later, I'm driving through Chicago on the way to vacation, they called me back. I didn't think I could talk right then, okay? So this is, these stories you're hearing, I mean, they're absolutely true. There's no doubt in my mind, and it's probably a lot worse if we really do them all. Okay. With that being said, now I'll get to my official duties. That was my comments. This is our resolution from the citizens of Amherst Township and Sheffield Township. Lorain County Board of Commissioners, Resolution Regarding Establishing a Sanitary Sewer Rental Agreement with the City of Lorain for Sanitary Sewer Service Outside the City of Lorain. I think you have all this in front of you. Lorain County Board of Commissioners met in regurgitation on the 12th day of September 2012 at the Lorain County Administration Building with the following members present: Mr. Ted Kaloe, Mrs. Laurie Kokoski, and Mr. Tom Williams. Whereas, on May 7, 2012, at the regular meeting of the Lorain City Council, council passed City of Lorain Ordinance Number 60-12, an ordinance amending Section 913 dot 305 rates for sewer rental outside city limits, of a codified ordinance of the City of Lorain and declaring an emergency, an emergency. And whereas, the effect of City of Lorain Ordinance Number 60-12 was to increase the sewer rental rate charged to approximately 820 Amherst Township residents and 136 Sheffield Township residencies from 130% to 200% of the cost of the city rate as established in Section 913 dot 303 of a codified ordinance of the City of Lorain. And whereas, City of Lorain Ordinance Number 60-12 cites the Ohio Revised Code Sections 729.49 Sewage Rates or Charges of Rent and 729.50 Management and Control of Sewer System for Legislative Authority. And whereas, Ohio Revised Code Section 729.49, the legislative authority of a municipal corporation which has installed or is installing sewage, a system of sewage, sewage pumping works, or sewage treatment or disposal works for public use, may by ordinance establish just and equitable rates or charges of rents to be paid to the municipal corporation for the use of such services by every person, firm, or corporation whose premises are served by connection there, too. And whereas, the minutes of May 7, 2012, meeting of the City of Lorain Streets and Utilities Committee indicate the desire of the city to adjust the fees to represent a better cost structure that would be more advantageous to the city and bring us, the City of Lorain, more in line with what other cities are charging outside users versus a just, fair, equitable, or reasonable rate based upon the cost of operations, maintenance, and treatment. And whereas, the sewer rate increase was only applicable to approximately 820 Amherst Township residences and 136 Sheffield Township residences for which the City of Lorain believes no contract exists for the provision sewer rates, thus not impacting the majority of customers receiving wastewater treatment service from the City of Lorain. And whereas, the residents in the Hidden Valley area of Amherst Township, through their home purchases, purchase price, paid tap-in fees and the construction cost of the sewage collection and conveyance system, which was installed by the subdivision developer, Mr. Ed Gargis, resulting in no debt service to the City of Lorain. And whereas, prior to the City of Lorain Ordinance Number 60-12, the residents in the Hidden Valley area of Amherst Township have been paying a sanitary sewer rental system rate of 130% of the cost of the city rate as established in the Section 913 point 303 of a codified ordinance of the City of Lorain since the initiation of the Hidden Valley development in the mid-1970s. And whereas, the City of Lorain has accepted federal, state of Ohio, and county funding and financial support for their system of sewage, sewage pumping works, or sewage treatment or disposal works for public use. And whereas, the 820 Amherst Township residences and 136 Sheffield Township residences are mandated to connect to the City of Lorain sewer utility due to existing law, effectively establish the City of Lorain Utility Department as a sole source for service. And whereas, the City of Lorain provided no notification to Lorain County Board of Commissioners, the Amherst Township Board of Trustees, or the Sheffield Township Board of Trustees of their intent to consider a large and unreasonable sewer rate increase, nor did the City of Lorain make any attempt to negotiate a contract for the provision of sanitary sewer service at just and equitable rates to the affected areas of Amherst and Sheffield Township prior to the rate increase. And whereas, it is unknown as to the amount of effort expended in researching old public and private records to determine if a contract exists for the establishing of sewer rental rates in the affected areas of Amherst and Sheffield Townships. And whereas, impacted residents in the affected areas of Amherst and Sheffield Townships are frustrated in trying to determine who represents their interest in the establishment of sewer and water rates, as they cannot vote for the elected leaders in the City of Lorain. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, the Board, state of Ohio, that Section 1, the Board finds a rate of 200% of the cost of the city rate as established in Section 913 point 303 of a codified ordinance of the City of Lorain per City Ordinance Number 60-12 to be unjust and unequitable. Section 2, the Board strongly recommends Lorain City Council to immediately repeal City of Lorain Ordinance Number 60-12. Such repeal would reestablish the sewer rental rate charged to approximately 820 Amherst Township residents and 136 Sheffield Township residences to a rate of 130% of the cost of the city rate as established in Section 913 point 303 of a codified ordinance of the City of Lorain, e.g., in-city rate equals $4.70 per 100 cubic feet of water use, and outside rate equals 1.3 times $4.70, or would be $6.11 per cubic feet of water use. The Board strongly recommends that the Lorain City Council provide a credit of the 130% to 200% sewer rate increase cost differential paid by Amherst and Sheffield Township residents from the date the rate increase was implemented until the date ordinance number 60-12 is Section 4, the Board strongly recommends that the Lorain City Council extend utility benefits available to City of Lorain residences to all City of Lorain utility customers, e.g. summer sewage average discount specified in Section 913 point 303, and exceptions to the sanitary sewer rental charges in Section 913 307 of a codified ordinance of the City of Lorain. Section 5, Lorain County Administrator is authorized to negotiate a contract or contracts with the City of Lorain for the provision of sewer and water service in the affected areas of Amherst and Sheffield Townships. Any such contract shall require approval by the respective Board of Trustees of the area affected by any contract for water and sewer service. Section 6, the Board supports change in the City of Lorain Sanitary Sewer Facility Planning Areas, FPA, and the FPA Designated Management Agency, DMA, within Amherst and Sheffield Township to adjoint the Lorain County/Rorain County Rural Wastewater District, FPA, in order to provide representation for the interest of the residents of the township. The Board encourages the City of Lorain to support any such changes in FPA. 7, it is found to be determined that all formal actions of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners concerning relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting, and all deliberations of the Board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including the Ohio Revised Code. Now, my question to you now, are you willing to support, be in support of this resolution and defend your consensus by signing this today?
I am okay with everything except 5, 6, and 7. If we can go over those, and I guess you're the guy to go over those with, if we can.
I'll be glad to sit down. We have a committee. We will all sit down, will you?
I would be willing to accept it as is today.
Thank you.
I'll second it, so we can discuss it.
Who's making the motion?
I made the motion.
I made the motion. I said, for somebody to second it so we can do discussion.
I didn't hear that, so I'm sorry.
You can always amend.
In the, 1, 2, 3, 4th, fourth whereas, it says, nor did the City of Lorain make any attempt to negotiate a contract for the provision of sanitary sewer service. The issue is that we are in negotiations right now, absolutely, and I don't want to ruin the negotiations that we have so far. And I don't know that, I don't know by signing this that that would do that, but if it does...
Do I need to address my name and address again?
No, we know, we know who you are.
Christine. Thank you. I feel that everything that's here is what you probably already have been in discussion with.
It is, absolutely. Everything that we've talked and put on the table is what you're asking for, everything.
So is there a reason why...
Summer sewer rates, well, just because...
You're not in support of, complete support of this resolution?
The only thing is when we're, like, when we talked about at the beginning where, you know, you're smacking the person across the table from you by saying, you didn't do this and you didn't do that, and shame on you for this. It's hard to negotiate with people while you're smacking them. So I'd rather get the negotiations done, and then if they don't, you know...
We would like to be an active part of these negotiations. We are the people that are being affected.
Well, actually, I think maybe if you want, Monday, at city council meeting, we could all go down there and it could...
Me, too? You'll invite me?
Sure, absolutely. Everybody could go. It's open meeting.
We definitely want you there, Tom.
I mean, no, I'm just, I get frustrated because this is other history about not being invited to meetings.
I'm just not sure what the problem, what was the problem with the whereas? What?
Well, it says that they have not made any attempts to negotiate, and we are negotiating, so they are making an attempt to negotiate.
Only because they felt pressure to.
Exactly. For whatever reason, they are negotiating, and you're right, it's because of the pressure that, because of all that's happened. There's just a couple of things...
Up until that point, I don't think they were willing to discuss anything, so we feel like that is a valid point. They were not willing to negotiate with us.
All I'm saying is if we're going to try to negotiate on your behalf, I think we are at a better chance of negotiating if we're, you know, under friendly terms, not, you know...
We want our...
It's just easier to negotiate that way.
We want our township trustees involved in this process also. I mean, everybody, if it's going to be something everyone sits down to do, everyone has to be at the table.
I guess my question is, what in here is...
I'm not finding what is objectionable. We can take out wording if you'd like. We can scratch that off.
Before we get to that, what in here...
Board, I asked first. I did ask first. I asked to get a second so I can make discussions on the three points.
Okay.
Because I've got valid points.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If you would go to the last page of the resolution, please.
I'm leaving the podium.
And whoever's going to answer it...
Can we hold this until we can clarify something, then?
Okay. Who's going to answer the questions? That's what I'm asking.
Neil Lynch.
He's just going to clarify, this is Kokoski's closing.
Oh, okay, and then I can go into my three. Okay, all right.
Yes, thank you. I'm Neil Lynch. I'm a trustee in Amherst Township, and I live at 8132 Ovalan Road. And Commissioner Kokoski, the fourth whereas that you're concerned with is on page 2 of this resolution, but this is not in any way to shove it in anybody's face in the City of Lorain. What this is stating in this whereas is actually a factual statement. It's not talking about any negotiation that's occurred after the rate increase. If we read the complete portion from the point where you have the concern, it said, nor did the City of Lorain make any attempt to negotiate a contract for the provision of sanitary sewer service at just and equitable rates to the affected areas of Amherst and Sheffield Township prior to the rate increase. That's a statement of fact. So they shouldn't have any consternation about a statement of fact, and that's what this is. So I hope that can be left there, because all this is a historical accounting of what's happened up to this point. And the request of the resolution so that it can have an immediate impact for these residents, I'm so proud of the residents of Amherst and Sheffield Township that have come together and shown up today, and they've spoken very well of their current plight. But we want to immediately turn it back to what they had before. Council can do that quickly just by repealing the ordinance. Very simple thing. But then, as also has been pointed out by Tom Huckman and others here, we don't start at 130%. 130% has always seemed like a very high rate. I would certainly hope that we're starting at the baseline of everybody being treated fairly as customers... fairly as customers of a utility that you are mandated to connect to and have no choice but to connect to. And the only entity with the legal authority to provide this utility service right now is the city of Lorraine. That's by law.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaloe, the points that you wanted to bring up are where?
I actually don't have a problem up through number four of the third page. My problem deals with three issues. Everybody has a copy of the resolution I'm hoping they're referring to?
No.
You don't have resolutions for everybody here?
You can't hear him?
I do not have resolutions.
Oh.
Do you have a projector?
You can't hear Ted?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do. Ernie, is he in the room or no? No. We actually can put it up on the screens for everybody and that way we can discuss it.
I'll see if he needs to change his state too.
Okay. We're going to do a tape change in the back and we're going to have our IT guy come up so we can put that on the screen. We're going to, five minutes?
Yeah, about five or six minutes so we can get people in. Yes, five, six, and seven. Those are the three sections I'd like to discuss.